...Munger.
Present.
Councilman Boardway.
Allen.
Councilman Gensel.
Allen.
Councilman Keating.
Present.
Supervisor Val is here. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Under preliminary matters, we don't preliminary matters tonight. Regular business, there's no regular business nor correspondence on the night of volume number three on our new business public hearing on the Boston State Road mixed-use project. At this time I make a motion to open the floor to comment on the Boston mixed-use project. Please come up to the mic.
It's one, yes.
It's at the top. State your name and...
Yes, good evening. My name is Shawn Hopkins. I'm the law firm of Hopkins, Sergeant Robinowski. On behalf of the applicant Quaker Estates One Limited Partnership. Also with me sitting at the table on the left is Bill Solak, who represents the project sponsor. And then looking through his file with the red tie, Mike Metzger, the project engineer from Metzger Civil Engineering. We're here this evening in connection with the request to rezone a portion of the vacant parcel located on Boston Road. Looked out in the audience, I see a lot of familiar faces. I think we all know where the site itself is. It currently consists of thirty-six point five-nine acres. And the zoning classification of that site is C1 local retail business district. Previously, the town board previously held a public hearing in early July. What we really want to emphasize this evening in terms of our presentation is what changes we've made since then. I know some of you are aware of those changes as a result of attending the informational meeting we held in this room a couple of months ago. It's also important to note that the project that's in front of the town board this evening is a rezoning decision. Meaning it's a land use decision. If and when the town board ultimately approves what we're requesting, that would not allow us to go out and start construction. We would then have to come back, submit fully engineered plans. We would also require site plan and subdivision approval. So it means there would still be numerous opportunities for public input. There'd still be numerous reviews and approvals required, including those required by the town's very own planning board. When we originally presented this project, I think this is going back to April of 2016, it was quite different. What it consisted of then was ninety-six multifamily units, commercial buildings, car wash, three hotel sites. Ultimately, we took a closer look at that and there were some problems. Number one, while the car wash seemed like a great idea, there's no visibility. Number two, we did have a market study prepared. And while it indicated there could be demand for one hotel, it clearly indicated three hotels wasn't warranted. So we went to the drawing board and changed that plan. Mike, do you want to change it to the next plan? To the plan that's currently on the easel. It's just consistent with what was presented to the town board during the public hearing held on July. That project involved a request to rezone twenty-one acres of a gap, the approximately thirty-six and a half acre site from C1 to R3 to accommodate a twenty-lot residential subdivision that would be accessed via a public roadway extension extending to Boston State Road and ninety-six multifamily units. And then one future hotel site located here in a series of lower intensity commercial buildings that we were thinking would maybe be appropriate for storage, self-contractors, snowplow, landscapers, et cetera, et cetera. Based on the input we received during the public hearing held in July, we went back to the drawing board again and changed the project. The key change to the layout that we presented in July, as you can see, we previously had multifamily located adjacent to those single-family homes on Meadow Drive. And we replaced that with single-family homes. The current plan, which is shown here, the color copy is shown there, changes that a little further. And what we've now done is instead of twenty lots for single-family homes, we're proposing seventeen. Mike, if you can show where that is. We're still showing one hotel site. That hotel site has been selected based on the proximity to the on-ramp to the 219 interchange. We're still showing the twelve multifamily buildings. Can you show where that is, Mike? And then perhaps most importantly, what we're showing is a large area of permanent open space. We've basically taken the amount of acreage to be rezoned and modified it. And as a result, now we have seventeen point oh-three acres of permanent open space. And that does include, for those homeowners located on this portion of Meadow Drive, a sixty-foot wide permanent open space buffer. And then as you move further down Meadow Drive, the entire project site, the entire width of the project site would be permanent open space. That permanent open space is important because what it means is it will never be developed. We're not only saying it won't be developed in connection with this currently proposed project, we've gone beyond that and indicated we would be willing to record a declaration of restrictions at the Erie County Clerk's office. So ultimately, if the project as currently envisioned is proposed, basically half of this site will remain forever as green space. We think that buffer is a nice amenity to those property owners on Meadow Drive. Keeping in mind, of course, that today the site is zoned for commercial. Meaning explicitly, without having to come in front of this town board for rezoning, that site could be developed in its entirety for commercial purposes. The other thing we've done is we were previously proposing an approximately four tenths of an acre of wetland impact located here on the back of those lots. As a result of the reduction of the number of lots from twenty to seventeen, we've reduced that wetland impact by two-thirds such that it would now only be point one-six acres. And just so everyone's aware, point one-six acres is less than one-half of one percent of the project site. As a result of the changes we've made, we've also reduced the traffic impacts. We're not denying the fact the project will result in traffic. But again, because we've scaled it back, the traffic impacts will be lower than we previously envisioned. So we think as a result of the input we received again, now going back a couple of years, that we've made significant progress. We understand that everyone in the room does not like the project. Everyone in the room is not supportive of the project. But I guess what we would ask everyone to consider, including the town board again, is the fact that today it is zoned commercial. That's a fact. Secondly, what we've done is we've really tried to accommodate the fact that yes, we are close to nearby single-family homes by providing that large amount of permanent open space. In that permanent open space, that's sixty feet, it's important to note especially these homeowners located at fifty-four eighty-nine to fifty-five twenty-five Meadow. There's relatively substantial vegetation located there. You know that. It's your backyard. That vegetation would remain as it is. We wouldn't touch it. It would remain there as a buffer. As we head further back, we would certainly be willing to discuss plantings for buffering purposes. But as you can see, as we get further back, there's really nothing to be that concerned about in terms of buffering because of the fact there would be no development on the back portion of the site now or at any time in the future. We do think that an argument can be made that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's located in an area that's been designated as appropriate for either commercial or residential development. We're trying to propose a mixed-use project. Obviously, the emphasis is residential, which we think is more compatible with the scale and the character of the nearby area. We hope that there will be demand for a new hotel. We think that would be a nice amenity to have to the town of Boston and its residents. And again, we have a market study that suggests yes, there could be demand for one new, more upscale hotel on the site. We also have submitted extensive documentation addressing potential adverse environmental impacts. The town board, the planning board, town's planning consultant, et cetera, all have been provided with extensive copies of that documentation. And we welcome any questions that you may have about that. But that really is the project in a nutshell. Where we originally began way back when, where we've come to this evening. And we're hoping that based on the willingness of the project sponsor again, to incorporate modifications, to incorporate input that we receive and in recognition of the fact that today the site is zoned for much more intensive commercial purposes, we're hoping that ultimately the town board will approve the requested rezoning. If there's any questions about the presentation, the plans that we presented, or again, the extensive documentation we previously submitted, either myself, Mr. Solak, or Mr. Metzger would welcome the opportunity to answer those questions.
It's open. Anybody want to make comments?
Sure.
Come up to the thing. Just state your name.
Northwest Cass, seventy-six one Boston State Road. I do have questions. I would like to know if you have seventeen building sites for residential...
Single-family homes.
Single-family homes. Has anybody looked into what the demand, what the price range is going to be for those houses? When you look at apartment complexes next to single-family houses, that does draw, I mean, it impacts the value of those houses. And...
I don't think your mic's hot.
Can you hear me?
No.
No?
It's not.
Great microphone. All right. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, so we have seventeen single-family residents. I don't think that the people in this room are so opposed to the residential development. I think people are concerned about the amount of, well, the commercial space. I mean, obviously, it's zoned commercial now. The idea of a possible hotel. I wouldn't want to own a house with a hotel on an adjacent lot. I also wouldn't, me personally, I wouldn't want to have a house where I had ninety-six rental units right next door. And that's really, I think that's the concern for most of the people in this room. And the public outcry has been pretty substantial for such a small town. We keep going in the same circles, the same issues over and over again. The town of Boston doesn't want this. And a town this size doesn't see this level of development usually unless there's demand for it. And you could show, I mean, you could draw up these plans and say, yes, it's going to, it's going to have positive impact on the community. But the reaction is overwhelmingly, no, we don't want it. And, I mean, I don't see any benefit for me. I don't think anybody else here sees a benefit for them. I think it benefits Roy. But I'm not even sure it's going to benefit him because how is he going to keep these units rented when people can't get out of their driveways in the morning? How is he going to sell these lots when, to people that want new construction when they have all these apartments next door? And how much is it going to cost to develop this land? To take care of the drainage issues? To bring in all the utilities and everything else that has to be done? I mean, what, do you know what this project is going to cost? I mean, to build ninety-six units and to parcel off these lands? Do you know what that's going to cost? Do you guys have an estimate? Can you run that number two up here? Of course, of course, yeah. But I imagine it's...
I do want to discuss it, would you?
Personally, okay. I mean, I can't think of anything else to add that we haven't already gone over, you know, a dozen times. I mean, other than the people don't want it. And I don't know. Does anybody else want to add something?
Traffic?
I would like to add.
I mean, traffic, yeah, that's an ongoing concern. Can you imagine living in one of these apartments? And you have to, you know, get to work in the morning, seven o'clock in the morning, and you have twenty-five, thirty cars in front of you waiting to pull out.
You're Tim Hortons.
Yeah, and you have a Tim Hortons on the other side. And, but this is going to be much more, much bigger impact than Tim Hortons. I would, if I was a renter, this is the last place I would live. Because I, I'm sorry, I don't want to compete with all these neighbors trying to get down a single lane onto the Boston State Road or onto the 219. And, I mean, it's a major problem. And I don't know how Roy's going to keep these rented. I don't know what else to add. I mean, we keep going around and around and around. I don't think this is a viable project. That's my opinion.
Tulane Connor, five-five-four-five Meadow Drive. I just want to piggyback on what you were saying. And I think what it really comes down to is we made our voices known. Traffic is a huge issue. Drainage is a huge issue. Correct. School taxes is a huge issue. We know ninety-six apartment buildings is not bringing in our school taxes as what a single-family home would. It cuts us drastically. How are we affording all of these new kids coming into Boston Valley, which is already like completely crowded? We can't support it anymore. We can't support the road there. So I don't think we're opposed to growth in this area. We want to see it grow the right way. We want to see it grow supportive. We want to see it grow to our values of our town. And right now, what we're seeing is what we're seeing so commonly in our government is government not listening to the people. Who's doing what is good for the single person, making more money for the rich that are already rich. We've made our voices known. We had the largest turnout that we've ever had in a public hearing in July. I think that speaks volumes. We're not saying don't develop. We're saying please listen to our voices. And let's do it the right way. Let's go in the right direction.
My name is Royce. I live at seven oh-nine eight Boston State Road, Hamburg, New York, which is in the vicinity, a couple doors away from Tim Hortons. I believe the planning board was unanimous in turning down this rezoning.
They actually have not given us any kind of a feedback on this particular thing. And as a new plan, it does require a feedback on the plan.
Prior to this, they turned it down, the rezoning, in best interest of the town. I don't think the emergency squad is thrilled about this. I don't think the fire company is thrilled about it either. The impact in the schools. If the reason, if this rezoning is passed, why have a planning board at all?
That's right.
Exactly.
That's right.
Ask them to look into this for the best interest of the town. If you don't want to have a planning board and you just want to hold things in, then don't have a planning board. But I believe that we need to look at this respectfully and with a lot of thought. The traffic is terrible there. And so I would ask the board, whoever has to vote, to take all those things into consideration before they vote.
Richard Hoffman, sixty-eight ninety-two Pinoc Drive in Boston. I think this, even though it's on the north Boston end of town, it affects everybody in this community. And I mean, everybody in this community. We know Boston, our tax base is never going to be a large tax base because we're never going to have industry coming in like it does in Springfield or Walmarts or whatever else of putting a lot of people to work. The only way our tax base is going to grow is individual homes of our children and other people moving into Boston and building single-dwelling homes to increase our tax base. The rental properties mean absolutely nothing to us because it doesn't bring a tax base or any money into it. It only brings it into the developer's hands and who owns it. If you continue to take all the land that is in the Boston Valley all the way down through, you take that big parcel of property, the only property that's pretty much left is up behind the post office, which we know every time it rains floods that out. We're lucky we keep our post office there. You have the works, it's five-acre fields, and I believe that's already talked about putting lots in that, four or five lots. Where are our children and where are the residents that want to come out here and keep Boston what it is going to be left? I believe there's a referendum that you can't build both power lines. And where are you going to get the water to put this subdivision in? What is it going to drain on the water supply, not only the traffic that's going to come on to the Boston State Road and the 219? Where's the water going to come from? I was the supervisor. I was the town councilman. We worked on three water projects. There are people right now paying ad valorem charges that will pay that charge for the rest of their lives and still never have water. What's it going to affect the people on the lower end of town? Where's all this water going to come from for ninety-six apartment houses and seventeen homes? Where's, what's their kids? Where's all that going to come from? And how is it going to help Boston? How is it going to help the residents? Because that's all we should be worrying about right now, are the residents of this community. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Roger Royce. I live at five-five-seven one Meadow Drive. I have a few questions I would direct at the previous speaker before it was open to the public. Number one, you mentioned a reduction in traffic. Seriously? I mean, what minute percentage of traffic would be reduced by the reduction that you've added since the July meeting? Negligible at best. Number two, I'm not exactly sure, did we say ninety-six apartment units? Exactly how many people do you think will come in and how long will they live there? I bring your attention to the Tim Hortons across the street from the project. Half of that building has been empty since Tim Horton's opened. Excuse me, Tim Horton's open because who the hell would want to go through that and try to run a viable business? Those are my two main concerns on that, the questions I would direct you to, traffic. And I cringe at the thought of a fire at one of these buildings for emergency vehicles having to get in and out and God forbid, paramedics, EMTs, whatever you want to call it, if somebody has, you know, life-threatening sickness and all that. I don't think that has even been considered when this project was developed.
Follow by the 9-1-0-6 Boston State Road. Yeah, this doesn't change anything for me. It really doesn't. I live on this end of town. And we're talking about a hotel still. Like, no, 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 no. The government has a responsibility to represent us. And I'm going to pair it with what Tulane said. Right now, the government's representing the people with the most money. And it's occurring right here in my own town. So I'm holding you guys accountable. Because the people don't want this. They don't. They don't want it. And I see it, I hear it all the time. I talk to tons of people in town. And nobody wants a hotel. And like Roger just said, if somebody gets hurt because emergency services can't get in, I'm coming to you if you decide to vote yes. All of us will. It's not okay. I'm emotional because this is our town. And you guys need to listen to the people, the people that are paying the taxes. And the only thing I see from this is one man benefiting. One man benefits. If it was beneficial to him and profitable, why go through this whole ordeal for years and years to convince us to rezon? Like, he doesn't, he's clearly not considering the fact that we, the people, don't like this idea. And instead of making this suited to our town's atmosphere, we're going to put hotels in, ignore the will of the people, to maximize profit. That's what it's about. Ridiculous. It's like this from local on up to federal. And you know how I feel about the lack of representation. And it starts right here in our little local town, Boston. And I'm demanding our board listen to the residents this time around.
I live on the same side as Tim Horton. There's a light here, there's a light down here. I look in here, I look in here. There's traffic going back and forth, back and forth. How much more is that going to be impacted with people going this way, going that way? Will the people get out of my driveway?
I have trouble getting out of my driveway. Sometimes I can wait five, six minutes.
I know. I mean, you've got ninety-six apartments. That's ninety-six cars or double if there's more than one car to a unit. Same thing with the homes. That's a lot of traffic to deal with. You know, if he wants to develop, there's land in Boston. There's other land in Boston. Can't he consider something like that? He would make money if that's his goal, which I'm sure it is. But the traffic is going to be horrendous still. There's a lot of cars going in and out there. Somebody gets backed up. Can the emergency squad get in or out? If that people are coming out, there's an accident. What's going to happen to that person and that ambulance? Or a fire?
I'm done.
I'm Jackie Sujik. I don't live downstairs, but we live up on the hill on Rockwood. We've been here since '09. And until this past two summers, we've never lost electricity. Never. Since this past two years, the houses that have gone up on Shiro and Rice that we live on Rockwood, we have lost our power seven times a summer in the sunny, beautiful days. So we've had a couple people come out to our house with ideas about our power problem. And I was talking to this one young man, and he said what I've nagged my husband about because they don't think we know what we're talking about. There's no grid out here for this. There is no power grid out in these farmlands for these multiple city dwellings they want to put up. I'm losing power now. I'm on a well that I got to worry about. And I'm at the top. I'm not over here yet. How do you guys think you're going to come in here with your city-processed infrastructure and plump it down here in Hooterville and think it's going to work? It's not. We've been out here for a reason. I didn't come out here to lose power. I lived in Florida for twenty-three years. No power is no fun. And we started having power, and I'm going to put a house generator out in the middle of farmland because there's no electricity poles that come out this far with the amount of power you're going to need for this little community to grow. We were here first. We pay the taxes. And I agree with, I forgot which person mentioned it. It is about government. And everybody's doing what I've all gotten to sort of election. It's not. It's the heart of it. We live here. We chose to live here. We pay the taxes. We pay the taxes, and we put you in your chairs. So now it's time to have this on a small scale and go to the big scale. You have to listen to us. There will be elections. You'll be replaced. And if you work them this time, then it'll be the next time, or it'll be the next time because now you're in our backyards. I'm running out of electricity. I'm having water issues. I've got some swirly stuff on the top of my pond I didn't have before. Things are changing here, and nobody's asking us or they're wondering, why is this meeting the week of Christmas? I was in the garage peeking out the door. Do you pick 40th of Christmas to have this downstairs meeting? Who are you kidding? The people that are here are diehards. There's more of us, but they have to finish their family business first.
That was done on purpose.
Of course it was done on purpose.
Yeah.
Do they look like they were concerned about having a packed crowd? No, not at all. Who's going to come 40th of Christmas, go home shopping and baking cookies? No, this was a foil like all the other stuff.
And we're dental and boardwalk.
Well, like I said, it's...
Well, the timing is right.
First, the person who asked for it.
Exactly. They asked for it the week of Christmas.
Why was the November canceled?
November was canceled because we also had not received anything from the planning board.
Well, you also didn't get anything from the planning board.
I concur with that, Donna.
Diana. Close enough.
She's been called worse than that.
Well, that was my point. I, this is a huge community. It's a beautiful community. It's got family values. It's why we live here. And I'm losing power. There's going to be water issues. And I agree.